The meeting is called to order at 7:00 PM. Our district clerk will recite the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sharon. All right. Hold on, please. My papers just got all stuck together. All right, may I have a motion in a second that the agenda of May 12th, 2020 be approved and submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
All in favor and non-opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. All right, may I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda? It is written on the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
All in favor, none opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Treasurers' report. May I have a motion in a second that the Treasurers' report, including the cash report, general fund cash report, the general fund revenue status report, general fund budget status report, school lunch fund cash report, and school lunch fund revenue and expense budget report for the month ending February 29th, 2020 be approved?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
All in favor, none opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. All right, special reports.
All right, so we do have a special report tonight. We have Kristin Williamson, our Director of Humanities, to talk about some textbooks the district would like to get approval for. And I'm going to share my screen so you can see the PowerPoint and the list of books. In a minute. There we go. And so this is my introduction of Kristin Williamson, the Director of Humanities. And I will put on the textbook presentation list here and turn it over to Kristin.
Thank you for the awesome production, Tom.
Hi, Kristin.
Hi, good to see everybody.
You too.
Yes, well, I am excited to be in front of you. We have five great books to present to you tonight, two from our World of Language Department at the high school and then three from our English Department at the high school. So our first one is Secretos. This is a fictional novel for our Spanish IV courses. As many of you know, we've really updated a lot of our traditional textbooks in the World of Language Department at the school, so I'm really excited to bring to you two novels. So this is a fictional story of two penpals, one from America, one from Argentina. And we see them in this story converse back and forth with each other, and they're dealing with a lot of issues as young adults. Our American penpal is dealing with some gender identity issues. And then our Argentinian penpal has uncovered some things in her family's past that are unsettling for her. So this is really just a novel about their friendship, their connection, and the way their community kind of helps them travel through this uncertain world as young adults. So that is Secretos. And then the next text from our World of Language Department is also for Spanish IV. This is Debido a la tormenta. I do not speak Spanish fluently, as you may be able to tell. This is also a fictional novel. This is the journey of an unaccompanied minor emigrating to the United States from Honduras. So we're hoping that this text is really, for many of our students, a window into a different perspective on immigration that maybe they haven't seen before, but also a mirror for some of our students who are immigrants or who have maybe come or traveled from other cultures to become a part of our American culture. So those are our two textbooks, novels for Spanish. For our English books, we have the novel, this is the memoir, so a true account. First They Killed My Father, this would be for our 10th grade course. This is the story of a young Cambodian girl who survives the Cambodian genocide. And so while she goes through many, obviously horrific events, it's really about her triumphant spirit, her hope. And then as she reunites with her family, it's about their dynamic that's really helped her not only survive, but really thrive. We also have SICE, which is a very engaging read. It's quite a thick book, but I think our students are really going to enjoy it. Some of them do read it in book club. So this would be for ninth grade. This is a fictional novel in which the world has kind of been perfected. So humanity has erased hunger, disease, war. So they have a new problem, which is population control. So that's where the SICE comes in. And the SICE's role in society is to control that population. So Citra and Rowan are the main characters, and they are apprentices of a SICE. And they really have to deal with that ethical dilemma of, as humans, deciding who gets to live in this society. So we're really looking at the decisions we make matching our moral compass, which I think we all can relate to and certainly an interesting topic for our teenagers. And then lastly, we have The Nickel Boys. This just won the Pulitzer Prize for fiction. This would be for our 11th grade courses. The teachers wrote an essential question, how does what I believe affect how I act? Certainly relatable to all humans, and this question is just permeated throughout the book. So we have two main characters, Alwood and Turner. And they are both sentenced to a juvenile detention facility down south in the 1960s. They are both teenagers of color. Alwood, his belief system really follows the ideology of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., whereas Turner has had some experiences that he's a bit more pessimistic. So we watch in this novel how they navigate this setting, this racist setting, basically. I can't tell you how it ends, but that essential question plays out. And I encourage you, if you can get your hands on a digital copy, this is an amazing read. So those are the five books that we're presenting for your consideration tonight. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, comment, let me know.
Thanks, Kristin. Board members, any questions, comments? Well, I guess not.
All right, thank you, guys.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Yeah, we appreciate it.
That concludes special report.
That's it?
That's it, just one special report.
All right, thank you. All right, well, now would be the time for the student rep. And of course, Levy has been excused, and there's nothing new to report from her end. But hi, Levy, if you're watching, we miss you. And a time and just another reminder to the public that the Board of Education meetings is on March 16th, 2020 forward. Until further notice, have been and shall be closed to the public under Governor Executive Order 202.1. Therefore, the Board encourages residents to share their opinions, voice concerns, and offer suggestions through written communication. And this past week, we did have some participation in that, and we appreciate that. And, you know, this does go against our practice, and it doesn't make us happy, but we are glad that people are aware that they can contact us through email or through phone calls. Okay, so that brings us to superintendent's reports.
Okay, so we just have a few reports tonight. I have a couple of student and staff honors. I have a very brief COVID-19 update, as I've been trying to do each board meeting. And then I'll turn it over to Dr. Sanz Suzy for our 2020-2021 budget review. Student and staff honors, this is the week of May 4th through the 8th. Last week was May 4th through the 8th. We didn't have a board meeting, but we'd like to still take this opportunity to give special thanks to our teachers for their dedication and hard work, especially during these challenging times. Our teachers here in Penfield have been unwavering in their dedication to our students and their continued learning despite the many challenges posed by this pandemic. We're incredibly proud of Team Penfield and thank all of them for their efforts on behalf of our students. So way to go, teachers, and thank you for everything that you do. We'd also like to take a moment, that May 6th last week was National School Nurse Day. And we want to take that time to celebrate and recognize the contributions of our school nurses. We can't thank them enough for what they're doing to ensure the health and safety of our students and staff during these trying times. You are truly appreciated each day and every day. So thank you to our school nurses. Shout out to my wife, who is a school nurse in another district. So wonderful support for our school nurses. And while we talk about student and staff updates, we also have a very exciting Board of Ed celebration. And that is the New York State School Boards Association's School Board U Recognition Program is designed to recognize the extensive time and effort of school board members who continually strive to expand their governance, knowledge, and skills. The program is comprised of four achievement levels. So a congratulations to Mr. Billy Jaeger, who achieved Level One Board Achievement Award for participation in NISBA Leadership Development Opportunities totaling 75 points. Typically at a meeting, I would hand this to Bill, but we already, I think, got it to him or it's in the mail. But congratulations, Bill, wonderful work.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Nice going, Bill.
Congratulations. Thank you.
I will transition to my COVID-19 update. And I actually don't have slides because they'd be the same slides I shared last meeting. So just as an overview, is that we officially close now over the Governor's Executive Order through the end of the school year. There is no determination on summer school yet, and we're waiting. The governor did say that by the end of May, he will let an answer about summer school. When we talk about summer school, we're talking about our, we participate in a collaborative summer school with, through Bosie's One. So it would be students that need to make up a course, students that want to take a course to try to get it out of the way. It also would impact our summer program for extended school year, our students with IEPs who have extended school year, as well as our ELA in math camp. So if the summer school program is not allowed to run due to the governor, we will internally see what we can do in the virtual space. But we are hopeful that we will be able to run summer school as usual with putting, obviously, the social distancing precautions in place. The other update with COVID-19 is we are still serving breakfast and lunch to our students. That's going very well, and a big thank you to food service, our administrators, and some staff who are helping out and making sure that all social distancing, masking, gloves are being used, but that we're providing food to families in Penfield in need and those who just need a little bit of normalcy in their life too. Because nothing says normalcy like pancakes in a bag. The other piece, thank you there, and then also thank you to Jim Cleveland, who is one of our members of B&amp;G, and he has been delivering meals to families who are unable to get here due to transportation or other issues. So I've heard from a number of families who just talk about how their kids get very excited when they see Jim pull up in the vehicle and know that their breakfast and lunch is getting delivered. So just a huge thank you, because one of so many examples of Team Penfield coming together at a difficult time to help out and make sure that our community gets what they need. The other piece is distance learning. Been pretty open that distance learning was something, the analogy I use for distance learning, it's, I'm sure, been overused, but it's really trying to build that airplane as we fly it. Our teachers transition to online learning pretty much overnight. It's not perfect. I meet with the superintendents across our county on a regular basis. We all are working to make our distance learning programs better, knowing that any change we make and anything that we put into place, well, some people will like other people, and so we're really trying to do the best we can. So we're continuing, now that we know we're closed, we're continuing to build our capacity for distance learning, working to have the most consistent program we can. We don't have one single platform. That's something we know we want to change by fall. And so we are a Microsoft 365 district, and that we really, our expectation moving forward that if we, gosh forbid, have to do this again in the fall, or any time in the next, whenever, if a pandemic like this hits again and we have to move to distance learning, we want to be able to say our platform is Microsoft Teams, and that's what we're using. So we're building that capacity, and it's hopefully something we won't have to do again with distance learning. But I think the realistic view is it's possible. And so we're going to continue building that. Parents, we'll get another email from me this week with some updates we're making. And then just as a final COVID-19 update, just an opportunity to say thank you to our community. They really have come out in force. I appreciate the emails on suggestions for making things better, and I appreciate the emails saying thank you for everything that the district is doing. There's not one corner of our district that isn't throwing in extra help and support for our families, for our students, and also for our staff. Lots of examples of staff taking care of each other's needs in order to do the best we can during this time. As I've always said, is none of us go into public education or run for a school board because we want to try to do virtual learning and we want to not be around students. So I know our teachers are overstated to find out that it is official. We're closed through the end of the year. Our administrators, our teachers, teaching assistants, clerical, custodians, B&amp;G, food service, they all want to get back to some form of normalcy and see the students that we really got into this career to support and help. But we're all hopeful that that will happen sooner rather than later. And that is my update for COVID-19, unless there are any questions from the board.
Board members? No, I think not, Tom.
Okay, I'm always available. And now I will stop sharing so I can turn it over to Dr. Sanz Suzy for the budget update. And that will just take me a second. There we go, and now Dr. Sanz Suzy will share his screen so he can control the flow.
Now, can you, am I all set? Can you see that?
Yep.
Fantastic, thank you. Oh, as Tom indicated, I will be presenting the 2021 budget as it stands. As you've seen a bit, this is a work in progress. But tonight, we are adopting a budget upper presentation at the June 9th meeting. That'll come with warnings and changes, some, a little bit of foreshadowing, I think, for what's to come. But as of tonight, this is where we stand. And I always begin, the board knows, I think, sometimes the board gets tired of me reminding them that we know we start these presentations with a review of our district goals. But as I was putting this together, it occurred to me that really it's easy to have goals, and it's easy to reach towards those goals when times are good. I think that we are entering a time, and the board knows this, that our goals are going to be tested. Academic achievement and excellence has already been tested by distance learning. We're continuing to learn how to do that. As those students come back to school, there's going to be varying levels of gaps for students who weren't able to keep up in that meeting. We know that's going to be something that we're going to have to deal with. So I think our commitment to academic achievement, to academic excellence is going to be tested. It's going to be tested as we move into a new future, perhaps with limited state aid partnerships. Certainly, a partnership with the community has been paramount in this. It's been evident. Our partnership with our parents, as our parents transitioned to being teachers, has been an important part of what we're all about. And certainly fiscal responsibility. We are embarking now, I think, on some new challenges that are going to test our commitment to long-range planning, to fiscal responsibility, to good decision-making. So, you know, these district goals have always been important. I remind the board and the public at them at every meeting because they're what guides us. I think they need to be kept in our mind, is what guides us as we move forward in the best. And I want to just talk about our budget calendar a little bit to remind the board where we started and where we've come. We began in October 8th in a much more normal time. And again, by establishing a calendar, reviewing where we began as a community, establishing goals and guidelines, reviewing the budget over time in chunks through December, January, and February, until we began to deal with the COVID epidemic. So in March 7th, it began to get much more real for everyone in New York. We'd certainly been watching it, we'd been concerned, we've been seeing illnesses grow in certain communities. And by March 7th, the governor declared COVID a state disaster emergency, turning on executive powers for him to be able to manage the emergency. Shortly thereafter, on March 16th, Adam Bello closed Monroe County schools. Right after that, the schools were closed statewide. And shortly after that, President Trump signed one of the very first and one of the largest stimulus bills, the CARES Act. All of that's relevant to our budgets, because you can see where we were at. At the end of March, in the middle of March, we were finishing our budget. We were looking forward to an adopted state budget on April 1st. And by then, it all went off the rails. So you can see what isn't happening of our board budget calendar because of this. One of the early executive orders at the end of March was, not early, the 13th executive order at the end of March, delayed budget votes until at least June 1st without any further information. So we've been working under that sort of, and we've been at a hold until tonight. On April 1st, in that context, the state budget was adopted. Think of the crisis that they were under. So they knew that, the state legislature, the governor, knew that there was going to be fiscal taxes as a result of this crisis, you know, putting New York State on pause. But they didn't know the boundaries of that. So they adopted a state budget with foundation aid frozen, so no increase. Really, foundation aid is the single largest source of revenue to all school districts. There are other aid categories, transportation aid, building aid, for textbooks and so on. But foundation aid provides the lion's share of state aid to districts. They froze that at the previous level. And they instituted a pandemic adjustment. They reduced, in fact, everyone's state aid by the amount equal to what, if you'll remember, the CARES Act that was passed by the federal government, provided some direct funding to school. Our share of that direct funding is $341, so that was known to the state legislature and governor. So they adopted a budget that, through the pandemic adjustment, reduced our state aid by that $341. So the idea here is that the federal aid supplants in our budget the state aid. That saved the state government about $1.1 billion, but held us level, held us flat. No increase in state aid for this year. By then, of course, we were able to, with flat state aid, we made, we were close to a budget. We made some reductions, and we were able to achieve, for tonight and going into this, a balanced budget with an increase of about $1.8 million. That's a 1.9% budget to budget increase of the overall total of about $1.2, $1.3 million. This is what that budget looks like in terms of the pieces of it. You can see really a status quo budget, no major increases in any of the aid categories. Really just moving forward this year's operations into next year. You can see that the pie shape here, the pies, really demonstrate that the majority of this budget, I think, is in, the single largest pieces are in the special areas, staff development, special education, classroom instruction, and then, of course, benefits for staff supporting those. Supporting those programs. That's the expense side of the budget, where we're at right now. The revenue side, of course, a budget needs to balance. So for this year, 65% or, well, say, 2/3 of our budget is supported by the property tax. 28% of the budget is state aid, and everything else in our budget, and that includes draws from reserves, appropriated fund balances, plus textbook fees. Everything really only forms the remaining 7%. So the majority of our budget's 65% from the property tax levy. The 28% is important because it offsets that. Those are really the two major moving parts to this. And we know that that levy growth is capped by the property tax cap. So for this year, the CPI that we use in the calculation is 1.81%. So the reason it's called the 2% tax cap is one of many factors in this formula is the CPI. Doesn't always turn out to be 2%, I know the board knows that. It's important to remind the public. The factor that causes it to be called the 2% cap is this, lesser of 2% or the rate of inflation. Rate of inflation was 1.8. The economy was already cooling a little bit when we moved into this crisis. So that's the number we use in the calculation. We are also allowed to use in the calculation an amount that accounts for real property tax growth in the community. That's the 0.82%. So those two factors, in conjunction with changes in pilots, as well as some carryover from the previous year, when you work this through a somewhat complicated formula, you end up with our tax cap being 2.66%, so a $1.7 million increase budget. This is what then our revenue highlights look like today. So we balance our budget. You can see state aid essentially flat at 0.89%. I have reduced sales. In this year's budget, sales tax is budgeted for $3.8 million, I'm anticipating. And I think I'm somewhat concerned that we might not be cutting this aggressively enough. But for now, I'm anticipating that sales tax sharing in Monroe County will decrease. Pilots are increasing, but that's a small portion of our budget. Other revenue, and again, a relatively insignificant fraction of our budget, is increasing slightly. So the remainder made up by the tax levy. And we're at the cap and in balance. So so far, so good. This is what that looks like, both sides of the budget put together are budget balances. It balances at a 1.9% budget to budget increase and about a 2.6, 2.7% levy increase. The, I need to shift gears into moving forward with this budget a little bit. And we're planning, we're adopting tonight, because as part of that budget adoption in April, there was some new legislation that provides additional authority to the board, or to, I'm sorry, to the governor. The, one of those was the executive authority that allowed him to delay the vote. He's since issued, as of May 1st, a new executive order that calls for a vote on June 9th. It also made some changes to the way we run, to the way candidates run for the Board of Education. So no signatures are required for board candidates. Candidates will be listed alphabetically on the ballot. We'll all be voting by absentee ballot. And this is a very, very compressed timeframe. So what we're doing now is, in the process of preparing ballots, we need to mail them directly to all of our voters. That needs to include a self-addressed stamped envelope. We're in the process of printing, as is every other Monroe County district. So this has turned into very much of a time crunch. But the other piece of legislation in that budget was this authority. The legislature granted the authority to the governor to make spending reductions. The legislature granted the authority to the governor to make spending reductions in the state's budget. Um, the, the governor always has the authority, the, the division of the budget always has the authority to reduce state operations, to reduce, um, you know, essentially the, the agency's budget. Um, but once a budget's been established, they really couldn't reduce in the past, um, state aid, Medicaid, the other components of the budget. They've granted the governor that authority. So if revenues come in, um, one percent below projections or expenses one percent above, that triggers, uh, the, the DOB, the governor's authority, uh, to reduce spending. The, the legislature that has ten days to adopt an alternative budget, if they disagree with what the governor has proposed, they can, uh, propose an alternative, um, and essentially adopt that alternative. They fail to do that, then, um, the governor's, uh, changes become, become law. Um, and that, but those, those, those measurements, the measurements of one percent above, uh, for, uh, expense or one percent below for revenue are, are made very specifically at three measurement period. The first one, only one month after the budget is adopted. So the budget adopted in, on April first, um, on April thirtieth, the question is, are we in balance? Obviously, we've passed that deadline, and I'll talk about that in just a bit. But there are other triggers, uh, a trigger at June thirtieth, the end of our school fiscal year. And then yet another trigger in December, uh, in mid-December. So at each of those periods, the opportunity for the, for the DOB, uh, the Division of Budget to reduce state spending, um, exists. So let's spend a moment and just look at what's gone on and what, uh, might be occurring based on those triggers. And, and this news, I think this tragic news is known all over. So unemployment claims, um, are the highest, uh, since the great, uh, since the Great Recession. Uh, the national, uh, gross domestic product contracted by a quarter, quarter of everything America makes, um, uh, went away essentially in the second quarter of twenty. Uh, non-farm, uh, employment's projected to decline by about seven percent. Unemployment is anticipated to average over eleven percent. Um, sales tax collections are projected to decline by fifteen percent. Uh, you'll, you'll recall that I reduced sale, anticipated sales tax collections in this budget. Um, they're anticipated to decline by fifteen today. Uh, the, um, the, uh, comptroller just released guidance that so far, uh, for this quarter, they're down fully twenty-five percent. So, um, we'll see what happens as the year, as the year goes by, and as the economy starts to come back to life, as, as, as we, um, sort of return hopefully to more, to a more normal situation. I skipped Wall Street bonuses, but they're very important, um, to New York's, to New York's budget health. Much of our state budget, uh, is balanced, in fact, on, on the money that's generated, uh, by Wall Street. Uh, when Wall Street is healthy, um, our state budget is healthy. And I, I think we're all aware of what's happened, um, in that. While it's struggling back, it certainly isn't what it was. Um, so all of this has been catastrophic for the state's financial picture. Um, the, uh, general fund revenues are expected to fall by about thirteen billion from, uh, February projection. So, um, while we're past that June thirtieth, um, deadline, um, the governor, um, will have the authority, we're waiting for that trigger, uh, to occur, and I believe that it will happen later this week. So, um, sometime later this week, early next week, um, they will finalize their analysis of, of the June, I'm sorry, the April thirtieth measurement period, um, and will begin to, to, um, the governor will begin to institute reduction. Um, sorry about, I apologize for that. Um, this is what that looks like, they, they have released some information in terms of their projection. Nothing in detail, nothing we can hang our hat on, nothing useful to Penfield as a school district. Uh, but this is what we see going forward. So adopted, uh, in nineteen twenty, um, they were in balance. Um, they adopted what they thought was a balanced budget, um, for twenty-two, twenty-one, or what they knew wasn't a balanced budget, but they needed to adopt the budget. Um, that's now thirteen billion dollars in the hole. You can see that their projection for that continues, uh, with ongoing deficits of seventeen billion, nineteen billion, eighteen billion dollars. If you've heard the governor, if you're a fan of the governor's, um, daily, uh, presentation, his, his news conference, you've heard him reference a sixty-eight billion dollar deficit in New York. And essentially, you get there, he gets there by adding together the deficits in each of those four years. Um, so it's a total deficit over each of the four years. If you look at the line, the red line, what you really see is a structural deficit around, you know, fourteen, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen billion dollars that will need to be addressed if the budget, the New York state budget is going to continue, uh, to be held. They included some information for that first year, uh, on where they anticipate making those cuts. Um, the local assistance budget, which includes many things, but one of those things, uh, is, uh, a school aid, uh, is projected to take an eight point eight billion dollar cut. Every other portion of the budget, uh, is anticipated to be reduced, but there are no details. We don't know yet what they intend, uh, to reduce for that eight billion dollars. We do know, as you saw their budget projection, they're forecasting that this will last more than one year. Uh, it's reasonable to assume, uh, that it's going to last for them and us, um, more than one year. Um, this is an analysis done by, um, a consulting group for the Division of Budget. You can see, uh, in, in the middle in blue and in green, the impact on state revenue of the last, um, downturns, the last great market downturns and, uh, the Great Recession, um, you can see is really being dwarfed now by what they're anticipating for, for COVID recession and their relatively minor downturn, uh, after nine one one. So we know this will be serious, we know it will, uh, go on for a number of years. Um, and in fact, what they did during the Great Recession was cut aid to schools. Um, they instituted the gap elimination adjustment, that reduced, you can see the red bar, that reduced aid to schools over a period of time. And in fact, we didn't come back to where we started the level of school aid for six years. So, uh, again, that four to six-year timeframe is probably, um, what we're facing as we move forward. Um, it's hard to know what they project, um, but in that budget guidance, uh, is, this is included. Um, if everything's on the table, um, uh, they, they estimate cuts in the range of twenty to thirty percent. Um, if everything's not on the table, so for example, Medicaid, uh, just took, uh, did take a reduction in this budget of about three billion dollars, I believe. Um, if they're held harmless, they're the other big player in the state budget besides school aid. If they're held harmless, smaller base, the cuts need to be deeper to get whole. Um, with everything on the table, they're still discussing significant reductions, twenty, thirty percent range. For us, twenty to thirty percent is about five point six at the low end, uh, to eight point four million at the high end. Um, so what do we know? Um, as we adopt our budget tonight, we know we're in balance. Um, we know the state, uh, uh, has, has, uh, declared a budget vote date of June ninth. We know there'll be state aid cuts, um, and we know it'll be a multi-year problem. Um, we don't really know the extent, the nature, the magnitude, um, or the frequency of those cuts. We don't know when they will occur, will they be now? Um, will they be further into the year at June thirtieth? Will there be a mid-year cut in, in, um, winter of next year? Will all three happen? Um, that remains to be seen. And I expect that, in fairness, the state, um, you know, the state Division of Budget doesn't know this yet either. Um, because they're waiting to see, uh, what happens to the state budget as we move through. Also, the other thing that, um, I think everyone is waiting on is, uh, the federal stimulus bud, um, package that's being discussed now in, uh, Washington DC. So the, um, the federal government has begun discussions around, uh, federal stimulus. The, uh, House of Representatives has a proposal that they're currently considering. They're, um, in the process this week of releasing, uh, and a, and a finalizing development on what that will look like. The Senate then has to consider an act, that has to be negotiated, there's a sense of urgency, I think, around it. Certainly, Governor Cuomo and the state governors have been, uh, calling for some support to localities. Um, but again, that's one of our unknowns, we don't know how that's going to turn out. Um, so in the meantime, we do what we must do and we plan for assessing our current financial condition. We're bracing ourselves for cuts, who, um, I think we will need to begin to develop criteria, uh, preparing information, uh, discussing decision points, and in the process, when will we need to make decisions around what kinds of reductions? Um, we need some more information before we can start that process. But we need to be realistic, I think it's realistic that as we move forward, there will be reductions, further reduction. Um, we just don't know, and that they will last for a period of time, we just don't know yet what they'll take. So reserves, our reserves an answer, and I, they are part of an answer, they're a bridge. I think a bridge to a structurally balanced budget. We cannot live for five and six years, uh, on and with a structurally unbalanced budget. Essentially, the governor's sixty-eight billion dollar plan. Um, they are, they, they are an easy choice, they feel good, um, we can avoid making cuts. But the problem is, um, they eventually run out, um, and you're left with the real problem that you didn't address in the first place. Our other challenge is that the majority of our reserves have always been, uh, in terms of capital. We use capital reserves, uh, uh, to pay for the local share of construction projects, um, as we've moved on. So we have reserves that are already supporting part of our cost purchase, we have capital reserve, and we have, um, relatively modest reserves in unemployment. Uh, we reserve for tax surcharge, which I anticipate will grow, um, as businesses struggle, um, and as revenues fall. I think tax surcharge plans will grow. We have enough for the outstanding claims right now. Um, and we have a reserve for retirement contribution. Um, I'm going to be recommending that we consider as possible, um, additional retirement contribution reserves, um, that we look at reserving some money for unemployment, we know that we're going to have layoffs. Um, we're going to need to begin planning for the next few years as we move through this process, and as we begin, um, our process of making potential reductions. So, um, we're going to be having lots of conversation, um, our public knows, I think our community knows how we do this. Um, we, we are transparent, uh, we talk about what reductions we're making and why, where we make them, because we know they need to be supported by our public. Um, those reductions need to be sustainable, have to reduce things, um, that we don't have to restore in the short term. Um, we need to consider where we can reduce, um, and communicate in a time when we're having video, you know, board meetings by Zoom, and folks aren't present to participate in the conversation. Um, so we need to think a little bit about what kind of reductions we can make and what kind of reductions we can make quickly and responsibly. Um, so one plan, a plan that I think we'll be adopting almost of necessity, um, is we will, um, begin belt tightening with, now, with what we know. Uh, with, as the, as the necessary, as the governor releases whatever cuts ultimately become necessary, we'll begin, uh, making reductions, we'll make reductions into next year. Uh, but at some point, you can't make changes and start a school year at the same time. Um, so at that point, um, we will depend on reserves and fund, get us through that year, I think. Um, and then need to continue that process throughout next year, as we communicate again with our public and with our staff, really, and, and make changes to restore structural balance as we move into next year. Uh, again, being realistic, we know it's not going away. Um, we know that the state will have limited ability to increase aid in the future, um, and we know that the tax cap's here to stay. So we're preparing for that, we're beginning the, those processes of, of conversation around reduction, um, in really three tiers. Not tiers because of the process of time, of the, the cuts that are relatively easier to make, or, 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 or less offensive to people, but really the cuts that can be made quickly will be tier one, because we'll have limited time. Uh, the near-term cuts that require some reorganization can be made in tier two. Uh, and there are probably reductions that we can make, are in a required study and conversation and extensive reorganization. Um, that process will continue, um, but they're going to, those reductions, if any, um, will have to be held, uh, for the future. Again, I want to come back to our goals. So, um, our, one of our budget goals, back when we adopted, um, um, our goals, assumption and guidelines for this budget conversation. Uh, prior to any of this, um, based on our three district goals, was that the budget must reflect current fiscal realities. It has to balance the needs of students, it has to maintain our programs and facilities, and it has to minimize the taxpayers. Um, you know, that's, that was good advice then, I think it's good advice now. Um, we're going to be paying attention to that as we do, and, and we're going to, uh, redouble, I think, our commitment to long-range planning. You know, we can, you know, it is easy in these times to make bad decisions. So we're going to work hard, I think, with our public, communicating as best we can to make what we hope are good ones, because we need public support. Um, the deadline for petitions for board candidates was May eleventh, um, yesterday. Um, ma, uh, tonight, we're approving and adopting the existing budget, budget that we have, um, knowing that, that that budget will be reduced. Um, but we have, uh, um, legal deadlines, um, and advertising deadlines, uh, as well as publication deadlines that we need to make. Um, and it's difficult to know, um, what to, changes to make when you don't know what, what it is. There'll be a public budget hearing on May twenty-sixth, again, it will be virtual, um, and we will vote by absentee ballot on June ninth. The other challenge that we face this year is one, again, not of our doing, but one that comes about in part because of, uh, the COVID crisis, and that is equalization rate changes in the community. So, um, the board knows, I think, that, um, and, and some members of our community might be aware that the state establishes equalization rates, um, that help us, um, in the, that we're required to use when we distribute, uh, the taxes, when we calculate a tax vote. The goal, the levy is what we collect, a levy is what we collect, that's what the cap is set on. Uh, then that amount is turned into a rate per house, based in part on the equalization rate. The equalization rate is the, is the state estimate of what houses in a community are assessed at versus what their real market value is. So for example, a house, if all the houses in a community on average are assessed at what they would sell for in the marketplace, they're at a hundred percent assessment, equal, their equalization rate would be one or one hundred percent. A community where the houses were assessed at about half of, uh, their market value, for example, your house that you could sell at arm's length transaction for a hundred thousand dollars was assessed at fifty, um, they would have a fifty percent equalization rate. And the, the, uh, state establishes this system to ensure that tax rates are fair between communities, irrespective of, of assessment practices. I'll get to, uh, dabble in that in a minute. But what we're seeing here is a result of two variables, two things that were occurring, that are occurring in, in our marketplace. Um, so I think we all know that over the course of the last few years, the market has been hot. Houses have been selling quickly, and they've been selling, um, at near and above, uh, their market value, the state's aware of that. And then so the towns began moving to reassess, uh, in order to maintain the equalization rate at a hundred percent. Um, Harrington had scheduled, the town of Harrington had scheduled, and, um, and, uh, a reassessment, uh, and had, in fact, had, um, moved into that process. Uh, when, uh, we went into, 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 into pause, into New York pause, um, and so they paused their reassessment, they were not able to complete their process. Pittsburgh, same way, they had started their process, had to stop. They had started their process, had to stop. Mastin and Walworth didn't start yet, but they were considering it. And Penfield has delayed their planned reassessment the second year. So as a result of that, of those two intertwined market changes, the hot market going into this year, understand that may have changed, but going into this year, the most recent information the state has. And then the required pause, the, the lack of reassessment. In fact, the reduction in, in overall levels of assessment because of the pause in, in reassessment has caused those equalization rates to decline. And not by equal amounts. This is what causes school budgets a challenge, not the rate of decline of X the tax rate and not by equal amounts. So Carrington's declined by 7%. That is very significant. Pittsburgh by five. You can see Mastin declining. The previous year, they'd gone from 100 to 96. Now they've declined still further to 88%. A very significant decline for the town of Mastin as well as for Walworth. What that causes is swings in the tax rate. And you see that here. Town of Penfield, our two largest towns are Penfield and Brighton. Penfield, calculation of tax rate, again, on an assessed levy is going up. The total amount of money that Penfield collects going up 2.6%. That turns into a 2% increase. The town of Penfield. Brighton goes down because they are at, remain at 100% of equalization. Pittsburgh, 3%. And larger shares in the other three towns, ranging from 5% to 7 to 8% in Mastin. The reason for that change, what drives that change is that change in equalization rate. Again, I, I explained this earlier. That property tax is based on the value of property in the community. There's a, the system is designed, the math behind this. We don't establish this. Again, we're, we're consumers of the, of the assessed valuations in the community that's established by the towns and the state who establishes those equalization rates. But the idea behind that system is that it's intended to ensure that everyone pays the same tax rate as a proportion of their market, the same tax amount as a proportion of their market value. So here's an example for the town, Monroe County, for the four towns in Monroe County. Market value in Penfield, market value, meaning what that house would sell for, right? At an arms-length transaction. The state is saying with their equalization rate of 87%, that it's assessed at, that an $87,000 assessed value house in Penfield would really be worth about 100. That when that house goes to market, that they could expect to receive about $100,000. And so the math works out with a slightly higher tax rate so that they pay $2,300 in taxes. Again, $93,000 assessment against 100, same 100,000, same exact market value house. Because the assessment varies, the rate varies. The idea being that that equalization rate does just what its name is. It equalizes between the assessment practices in the towns to ensure that that same market value hall explains or pays the same tax bill essentially. This is complicated. This is difficult and this is hard for people to understand. It is one of our challenges as we go into this part, as we go into this budget cycle. So we are facing significant state aid reductions. We're facing challenges around our equalization and tax rates. These are final, by the way. This is my, I shouldn't emphasize that. This is not final. The towns have not yet finalized their assessments. So that will come as we move forward. But it is what we know as of this time, point in time. We want to be, again, be transparent about what we know. So we try and calculate, we estimate, again, it's an estimate, of what that tax increase means for a home with an average assessment of $200,000. Again, for our Penfield homeowners, you can see with basic star, then that represents about $139 increase in the tax bill for that homeowner. With enhanced star for the seniors with, with, for the seniors who receive enhanced star, that's 111 estimated dollar increase. We also, I want to review briefly the ballot. We also have on the ballot, in addition to the budget, board members. So there is also on the ballot, two members for, two seats, I should say, for three-year terms. And we have seven candidates running for those two seats. They're listed in alphabetical order. The two incumbents also running for reelection are Lisa Noddy-Chinsey and Calum Freeler. They, there are in total then, seven folks for those two seats. The ballot, there will be two ballots, or two propositions, I'm sorry, on the ballot. The general fund budget, so seeking approval of the budget I just described, a bus purchase proposition. We are, we are continuing with that replacement program to discontinue this. Would set us backwards, not just in bus replacement, but we also received state aid on those buses. So it would, not immediately, but down the road, resulting yet another reduction in our state aid flow. So we think and thought it's important to not make that decision at this point. The budget hearing will be on May 26th. And again, June 9th is the budget vote and election. It's by absentee ballot only. So homeowners will be receiving, or taxpayers should be receiving absentee ballots. We'll be mailing those absentee ballots to all, to residents. We don't have, we're mailing them to all residents who are aware of. We'll be sending them out and, and offering an opportunity for folks to pick up additional absentee ballots if they need them. Because we don't have core registration. So we are, we are a poll registration district. So we will be mailing out ballots and providing additional ballots for people that can mail them back. They don't need to bring them back on June 9th. They can mail them back soon and should mail them back as soon as they receive them because of tightness of time. They need to be back in the district's hands by 5:00 PM on June 9th. We'll have more, more additional information posted, not just on that process, not just on the board election, but also on budget and changes that we need to make as we move along. We'll continue to communicate. All of that posted on our, on our website at www.penfield.edu and click on budget information. So I apologize for, for going, there was a lot there and I moved fairly quickly. Can I answer any questions at the board right now?
Board members. And Mark, I don't think you went too quickly. Because your, your slide presentation is so thorough. So I think that, I don't know, we're probably just all overwhelmed. Probably not by what you said so much as just the bleakness of the forecast.
It, it is difficult to know how this is going to turn out.
Yeah. Board members, any questions or comments for Mark?
I had a question.
Calvin.
Thank you. So the concern I have is that the state is suffering from loss of revenue. I'm concerned about our voters suffering the same problem. And so this may be difficult for them to want to sustain a 2.66% increase. What if they say, no, we don't want this? What are we going to do then?
I'm very glad you asked that question. So none of the rules have been suspended around our budget voting process. So some years ago, the budget process was changed. So that if we suffer a defeat, we have to, you know, we are asking, we're asking the public to consider, consider authorizing that, that budget and that budget increase. If they decline, if, if they cannot support that, we have the right to, the board has the right, I should say, to make changes to the budget or to not do. They could resubmit the same budget again for a second vote. I think that's usually unwise, but they could. Typically, the board would make changes to that budget. They could make any reductions that they thought were appropriate and resubmit it. If it fails to pass on that second vote, the board would be obligated to reduce the levy increase to zero and to adopt a contingent budget. So what that means, there's, there's a whole series of sort of complicated rules around what can be in and not be in a contingent budget. Some of those involve public use of facilities and equipment and things like that. I think the most important thing for, for the public to understand is that the board would be obligated to get to zero. So the, so that would mean a loss in, I don't know, revenue budget. Let's, let me just go back to, to that revenue slide. Am I still sharing? Thank you. So that would mean a loss to the, to the budget of that $1.7 million. That would go to zero. We'd be, the board would be obligated to adopt whatever cuts were necessary to get there. Right? So you, you would make, you could draw it all from reserves, right? Because that would get you to zero on the revenue side. Or you could make cuts. That would get you to zero as well. All of that would not do anything to address the upcoming state aid cut. So that $28 million line essentially held flat. None of that would make this go away. So we would get to zero. We would either draw from reserves or make cuts, whatever cuts were necessary to get to zero. And then when the additional cuts come in, in the course of another few months, or a few months, I'm sorry, a few days, and into the coming months, that would reduce that state aid line. That state aid line, then we would begin making the reductions that we've already begun talking about. Well, they'd be new and different reductions because chances are we would have made some of those to get to zero. So essentially, that scenario doubles down on reductions that would come in, in the form of this budget.
Okay. So to summarize, we would cut our own budget from the, the voters not wanting to pay for it. Then, then the state comes in with this, then we'd have to cut it again.
Right.
Okay.
The, you know, with, yes, that's exactly right. That's exactly right.
Okay. Any other questions?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Lisa.
Mark, in your experience, because now we're going into this economic decline, would you think the state would come back and change some of the equalization rate?
No.
No?
No. I think, well, I, I shouldn't, you know, nothing is for sure in this environment. But, you know, there's an awful lot of moving parts that they're dealing with at this point. And I think an equalization rate is an awfully inside baseball for them to be able to figure out, to deal with. Don't forget that, that if they were to change those, there are people right now that benefit from, even in our community, from changes in the equalization rate. Some towns see lesser increases because of increases in other towns. Again, it's unwelcome for us. This isn't a good time to have that conversation. But behind it all, it's intended to ensure equity and, and it's sort of hard to say we're going to put a pause on that.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? I have a question, Mark. You called it a specific term, the accumulation of the, the upcoming years, adding all those deficits together to get what the governor is calling the deficit?
Right. I'm not sure what I called it, but it's, I think he's saying about $68 billion was the number he said today.
Right.
Yeah.
Is that the proper way to forecast in a situation like this?
I know, I called it a structural deficit.
Yeah.
So his revenues, the state's revenues do not equal their expenditures, right? They, they not have a revenue that covers what they spend. If that, if they build a budget that could, and his budget projects that into the future. You know, the only way that that gets corrected is by reduction of expense or generation of revenue. And you've heard both those things on the table in the conversations, depending on who you listen to. You know, the more liberal voices are saying, well, this is a time for, you know, to tax the wealthiest New Yorkers. They can contribute more of their fair share. You know, we've, we've heard that. You know, that's part of this conversation. And then, of course, the other voice is we need to reduce spending. But the idea is that no budget can continue structurally unbalanced, that the revenues have to, over time, equal expenditures. But the, you know, the state budget has more levers to pull than schools do for, for down this food chain. Same with towns and villages. You know, we're creations of the state and depend on them for a portion of revenue. So when they suffer, we all do. But, you know, they're going to, they have to get their budget back to the state. The, the, you know, the stimulus money that they are calling for, I think, would be welcome. You know, you will hear people say it's not a good idea. I under, you know, it is a one-shot revenue. You've heard me rail against that kind of budgeting, our own budget, a lot through the years. But it makes sense. We're, you know, we've already talked about leaning a bit on one-shot revenue as we move into next year just because of the timing issue. A stimulus to the state government is going to provide them breathing room to figure it out. You know, no stimulus is going to last for forever. You know, it, it's going to fill their temporary hole. But hopefully during that period of time, Wall Street recovers, the economy recovers, tax receipts, sales tax receipts start to come back. You know, everybody starts to get healthy again. You know, maybe it takes the edge off and helps through the rocky time. That's an appropriate use of a reserve or of a stimulus feeling. But we don't, but it's not a permanent solution to an out-of-balance budget.
Right. But, but the projection doesn't necessarily seem realistic. Because if, let's just say in three or four months' time, the economy, while in, you know, like towards Christmas, we're going to be spending more money, there's going to be more sales tax revenue, you know, it's obvious that these numbers are not, these, these are only projections. But we don't know how robustly, if at all, the, the economy is going to come back. And so, so I, I'm just curious, like, is he painting a bleaker picture? Is he, is he being conservative or is he throwing numbers out there based on what? And, and in your professional opinion, should, how closely should we study those numbers? Or should, should we just, okay, I think I know where you're going. Okay.
You know, I think he is campaigning hard for a stimulus. You know, you know, I think the $68 billion adds up, all the years of his stimulus. But I, but there is no doubt, you saw the facts around the economy of the state of New York and of our national economy. You know, there's no doubt that he's got, that this state has a problem. There is no doubt. You know, how long, that's absolutely, you know, just not subject to, to question. How long that lasts, how deep it goes, you know, my crystal ball just isn't. I, I couldn't even begin to guess.
All right, we're just going to have to take it as it comes for a while until we see if, if a pattern even establishes.
We, we're going to do our best to plan. We're going to try and, and, and prepare. And meanwhile, you know, we're going to, we're going to kind of pay attention to what goes in Albany and hope things go our way.
Right. Well, I appreciate how, you know, I, I love the way you lay it out. And, you know, it, it's big, the, the problem is big. The budget is, you know, it's probably complicated to the average person because they, you know, it's like you were, we've said before that a lot of the things that you and Tom and Jim, y'all talk about amongst, and Barb, how y'all talk amongst yourselves, you talk it every day. You understand it every day. And then the average person, I don't think, has that kind of common knowledge. of common knowledge, um, about this particular thing. So, um, as always, I thank you for the thoroughness and, uh, the patience to answer all of our questions. And hopefully it'll be better than it looks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes superintendent reports.
Thank you, Dr. Putnam.
Welcome.
All right. There is nothing for facilities, so we're on to financial items. The next agenda item is approval of the notice of annual meeting budget vote and election. We approved the substance of this language at a previous meeting and authorized the superintendent to make necessary changes and publish the notice as soon as possible after the governor released the necessary information. The language in the agenda has been published as a legal notice in our official papers. It calls for a vote by absentee ballot on June 9. Dr. Sanz Susi has reviewed the content of the two propositions as well as the information on board candidates. The complete language is printed in the agenda. May I have a motion in a second for approval of the annual meeting budget vote and election as amended?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
All in favor and none opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, approve and adopt the budget. Dr. Sanz presented information on the budget. The board must adopt the budget for presentation to the voters on June 9. May I have a motion in a second? That the budget for the 2020, 2021 school year be submitted to the voters for approval on June 9, 2020, in the amount of 102,615,305 dollars. So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions or?
Yeah, it looks like we, um, yeah, lost Catherine for a minute here. So I'll just say, is any questions or comments? All those in favor?
I had a question.
No, go ahead. Go ahead, Calvin.
So we, we still have the, um, security resource officer in this budget?
That is correct.
Okay. Lisa had a question. Nope.
Nope. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, ready for a vote? All of those in favor of adopting the budget, approving and adopting the budget? Opposed?
Okay, so I have, uh, five in pa- in favor, one opposed, Mr. Freeler, and Catherine is absent. Due to Zoom.
All right, so I'll just pick up.
The motion will carry.
Oh, thank you. I will just pick up until Catherine gets back here. Um, so the next agenda item is the 2020, 2021 budget property tax report card. So, uh, since I'm kind of taking those to fly, Sharon, should, do I need to read this whole public content out?
Basically, um, the district is required to submit the property tax report card to the New York State Education Department. And the report card has been provided to the board and will be included as part of the budget and will be included in the information on the district's website. And then if you, um, can continue with the last two paragraphs, beginning with be it resolved in the motion, we should be all set.
Certainly. Okay. Thank, thank you, Sherman.
You're welcome.
So be resolved that the Penfield Central School District Board of Education approve the 2020, 2021 property tax report card as presented. Be it further resolved, resolved that the deputy superintendent for business and finance is directed to submit the property tax report card to the state education department by the end of the next business day following this approval. I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I had a question. So what is, what is this report card? I'm not familiar with it.
It essentially, it's a, it's attached in your packet. It just summarizes the budget, the levy, um, and the information on reserves, uh, that I presented. Um, also included, uh, is information on proposed, uh, potential increases in, in those reserves if we're able to make. So I mentioned this in the presentation, uh, uh, unemployment, um, and retirement system.
And this is, Mark, is this state required?
Yes, it is.
Okay, any other questions? All those in favor? Okay.
Okay, we have. We have, uh, seven in favor and none opposed. Welcome back, back Catherine. Motion carries.
Yes, and I will return the floor to Catherine.
All right. Thank you. About that, I don't know what happened with that, but here we go. All right. So you just finished, um.
C. We're on D now.
Okay, thank you. General fund budget amendment and bus lift purchase. On April 22, 2020, a bus lift was immediately removed from service due to safety concerns. This was necessary to ensure the safety of our bus mechanics. The lift is unserviceable and requires replacement. Replacement of the bus lift was not planned for this year and funding was not included in the 2019, 2020 approved budget. The Director of Transportation and District Purchasing Agent identified a replacement bus lift with an estimated total cost of $46,000. Equipment such as a bus lift is an ordinary contingent expense that assures the health and safety of students and staff. General fund unassigned fund balance will be used to purchase the bus lift. May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education approve an amendment totaling $46,000 to the 2019, 2020 general fund budget as shown above, the amount submitted both as revenue and expenditure expenses. So moved. Items. No, sorry, Barb. That's okay.
All right, second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
All in favor and none, uh, opposed. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Revenue anticipation note, RAN resolution. The next item on the agenda is, excuse me, the next item on the agenda is authorization for the board president to sign any necessary paperwork for the issuance of a revenue anticipation note. State aid should be delayed because of the state's budget problems. This is a short-term note for cash flow funding in anticipation of revenue. The district does not have current plans to issue these notes. The resolution is being adopted as a precaution. The full text is printed in the agenda. May I have a motion in a second that the board approve the resolution as stated?
So moved.
Second. Any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Oh, yes, Lisa. No, that's okay.
Um, I'm just curious about the language in the resolution. So if we're thinking we want to authorize this every July, would we want to state that in the language rather than have it be open-ended?
That's a, that's certainly a, a possibility. Um, the, our bond counsel is Tim McGill. Um, he suggests this, he calls this perpetual language. So essentially, I think your concern is the language grants the authority to issue RANs, um, and then there doesn't really have an expiration date in it.
Right, right.
So, um, my suggestion for that, and the reason he does that actually was I, I was, I had a conversation with Chuck Bastian, who, you know, he's one of our financial advisors for the Donigan. And he'll, he has sort of horror stories about districts that failed to adopt the resolution and then needed it at the 11th hour. They sort of, like, they realize times are tough. They're not getting the state aid they need. Um, they're using up their available cash, um, and they need to make payroll, and they need a RAN, and they don't have the resolution in place. Um, so, you know, because of those sorts of, of problems, um, they've come to this recommendation that it should be, you know, sort of an evergreen resolution. Obviously, uh, the board president needs to decide it that we would, you know, we'd be communicating with the board about that, uh, but that the authority would be there. Um, I share some of the concern about just doing it and never talking about it again. So my suggestion is that we redo it as part of, um, of the reorganization meeting every year so that we sort of re-annually adopt it. Because of that, you could change the language. Um, but if the district ever failed to do it and then needed it, you wouldn't have it in place. So it's a balancing act. Um, honestly, if there are lots of board concerns about that, um, we don't need it immediately, and I would be happy to take it back and have it rewrapped. I wouldn't want to fix the language. This is bond counsel stuff. Um, so I would want them to, to do that. But, um, um, their recommendation is for the, for that evergreen resolution.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, Lisa, were you done? Did that?
No, I just, I, I guess I understand the need and the need to be time-sensitive. I just feel like if we're going to be doing this every July, then maybe it makes sense to have it dated, right, every July, or somehow know that we're re-authorizing it as a board when we reorganize and everyone knows who's part of that board and who's legally responsible for this piece. That's just my two cents. Thank you.
So, so, and that, that kind of is somewhat related to my question is, even though this resolution is open-ended, would it survive to the, beyond the next reorganization? You know, the next, you know, January, July 1 is the new board. Would a resolution of the old board survive that? Or would we just by nature have to do it and keep it valid?
No, I believe that it would survive.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm, I'm really, I, again, um, we don't have an immediate need before the next board meeting. If the board has concerns, I would table it. I would bring it back, but I, really, I leave that to, you know, that's, um, Bernie's and, uh, and, um, Tim McGill's recommendations was for this one. So I don't think they would object if you were uncomfortable with that and wanted to change it. I think they would just want you to understand their rationale and already like that. So.
Do you, Mark, do you, again, can you, I think you said this, do you see a circumstance before our next reorganization where we would need this?
Oh, before the reorganization?
Yes.
I would want it in place sooner than that. Um, it's really, uh, the majority of state aid for school districts, um, comes at the tail end of the year, and that's part of the concern here. That's, I think you'll find, uh, we're not alone in this. Districts across the state, certainly across county, uh, are in the process of adopting this resolution. You know, just because of concerns of our state's fiscal condition and, and so, um, you know, if the state has a cash flow problem, we just want it to be a bar. Um, but, uh, you know, certainly, I think we would be fine, certainly for two more weeks while we fix it.
All right. So, um, if we fix it, can we fix it and use it as essentially the, the boilerplate language for subsequent annual readoptions? So basically, put it in the terms of until the next reorganization?
I, I think that's what I would propose. Uh, I'd be happy to do so. Again, I'd want to have conversation with, um, with Tim about what that language would look like. But I don't see any reason that we wouldn't adopt a, a resolution that would be for the rest of this school year, and then it would have to, or, and then it would have to be readopted at the next reorganization. And we would plan on doing that.
All right. So I, and I'm going to make a motion that we, um, table this until, um, or send it back to be reworded with the, with that wording in place. So we have it, one, we have it to the end of this fis- this fiscal year, and two, then we have wording that we can use year in, year out, from here on out.
And then the alternative would be to, um, uh, make that change at the organizational meeting, correct? Did I understand that correctly?
Yep.
I believe we have to postpone it rather than table it.
Okay, I'll make the motion to postpone it. Until the.
Until the May 26 board meeting?
Correct.
Oh, second. Do I have to second? I don't know if I have to do that.
All right. Any other questions or comments about that?
So we have Mark, uh, motioning and Lisa seconding the postponement till May 26. Is that correct?
That's my understanding. Lisa and Mark, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
And, and does any other board member have a question or comment about that, about Mark's motion? Okay. All those in favor? All those opposed?
Okay, we have, um, five in favor and two opposed. So the motion will carry.
Okay. Very good. All right, donations. Donations totaling $3,351.72 for items in the 2019, 2020 budget were received by the district schools as shown. Indian Landing Elementary PTO to music department, $3,351.72. May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education approve an amendment totaling $3,351.72 to the 2019, 2020 budget as shown above, the amount submitted both as revenue and expenditure items, and express its gratitude to the donors for their generous support of Penfield schools.
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
All in favor, none are opposed. Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Agreement with Penfield Support Staff Association. May I have a motion in a second that the board approves the agreement between the Penfield Support Staff Association, the PSSA, and the Penfield Central School District effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2022? So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
All are in favor and none opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you. All right. Uh, I think you may have seen it on the slide earlier that , uh, the board, meet the board candidates night is going to be coming. I, I've talked to Sherry, our Johnson, we're working on a date. So, uh, the meeting, the meet the candidates night is being planned. It will be held via Zoom video conferencing, and the date is to be determined. But obviously, it won't be long now because we're getting closer to the vote date. So that should be forthcoming. All right. Um, no unfinished business, but before we, um, go on to adjourn, I just want to say that, um, due to technical difficulties, I was bumped from the meeting when it came time to the, for the crucial, uh, budget vote. And I'm very upset that I missed the vote, but I want, uh, the board and the, uh, public to know that I did support the budget. And if I hadn't been bumped from the meeting, I would have voted yes. So there being no other further business, um, may I have a motion in a second to adjourn the meeting at 8:30 PM? So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
All in favor and none opposed. Motion carries and meeting is adjourned.
All right, thank you.